All right, Mr. Chairman, should be good to go.
All set? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Newington Planning and Zoning Commission a regular meeting to order for 14 August 2024. Please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag. Maureen, can we do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Flaffy. Commissioner Fox.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lyman. Commissioner Nafis. Commissioner Castrelli.
Here.
Chairman Sobieski.
Here.
Commissioner Woods.
Here.
Commissioner Dros. Commissioner Hoffman.
Here.
Commissioner Wood.
Okay, I'd like to appoint Commissioner Hoffman for Commissioner Nafis, please. And Eric, can you check to see if Susan's on?
Oh, she is?
Okay.
I saw her, but now I do not.
Yeah.
She was, yeah, and then. So we'll see how that goes.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes you don't see her. She turned off her timer.
No, I don't. There's no. She's not on here logged in.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Planner, approval of the agenda?
So on the agenda, the one item that I'll note is we received an email from the applicant from 175 Lowry. Unfortunately, she has withdrawn the application. So that she will no longer be going ahead with a special use permit and withdrawing and pulled out of negotiations with the owner. So that is something that when we get to that item on the agenda, again, the public hearing won't be open because she was drawn. But I have provided you with a draft motion to accept the withdrawal. And I provided the commission with a copy of that email from the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any? I'm sorry.
Wakama's online.
Oh, Commissioner Wakama's online. I'd like to appoint her and Commissioner Flaffy's spot. Thank you. Any public participation next? This will be limited to three minutes. For items not on the agenda, come up here if you wish. Anybody online, Eric?
No one online has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is the zoning officers' report. Eric?
Are there any questions? A couple of those items, just so you guys know, have been referred to the town attorney. Seventy-nine Florence and twenty-six oh eight Berlin Turnpike.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners about the zoning officers' report? Okay, thank you. Remarks by commissioners and commission remarks at this time. Okay. All right, first public hearing, which is twenty-four twelve, has been withdrawn. The second petition is twenty-four thirteen, special place of worship at seven ninety, seven ninety-five North, North Mountain Road, Mr. Planner.
Yep, so I'm gonna read the notice into the record. It'll be the entire notice as it went in the newspaper, so it'll include the one that is withdrawn. Newington Town Plan and Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearing, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P M. Notice is hereby given that the Newington Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing in Council Chamber's room one oh three at Town Hall, two hundred Garfield Street, Newington, Connecticut, on Wednesday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, to consider the following petitions. Petition TPZ twenty-four twelve, special permit section three point one, three point zero, three point one, three point one, for a place of assembly for recreation for an indoor trampoline park with an accessory cafe at one seventy-five Lowry Place, AKA one oh three, one seventy-five Lowry Place, in the BTC Business Town Center Zone and Town Center Village Overlay District. Applicant contact Ayesha Afzal, owner Lowry Place Realty LLC. Petition TPZ twenty-four thirteen, special permit three point two point one for a place of worship at seven nine five North Mountain Road in the I Industrial Zone. Applicant contact Sean Garan. Sean Thavang, owner City Church Corporation. The public hearing will be a Zoom hybrid webinar. Information on how to attend, we post on the town website. Link follows. These petitions and related materials are available for public inspection at the town planner's office, Town Hall, room two oh four, and through the public's agenda at the Town Plan and Zoning Commission's Agenda Center. Link follows. Persons who require accommodation to participate in this public hearing should contact the town planner at eight six zero six six five eight five seven eight, or email follows. Not less than twenty-four hours before the public hearing. Submitted Paul Dixon, Town Planner, and this ran in the rare reminder, August first and August eighth.
Thank you, Mr. Planner. So petition twenty-four thirteen, would you like to read that, Mr. Planner, or we just did?
Yep, I think.
So I'll read it from.
Yep.
Here. Yeah, petition TPZ two four dash one three, special permit three point two point one for a place of worship at seven ninety-five North Mountain Road in the I Industrial Zone. Applicant contact Sean Garun Shantavang, owner City Church Corporation.
Come up, sir.
Is the petitioner here?
Yes, you can come up and take a seat there.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lasami Chantavang, sixteen Cabo Stone Way, Windsor, Connecticut, zero six zero nine five.
Go ahead.
And if you could just give us a, you know.
Brief overview.
Yes, I will. I represent the City Church at seven ninety-five North Mountain Road. At this time, we'd like to request, like, to open up the church as stated in the narrative that we will operate it from Sunday mostly, from ten to twelve, and then sometime Saturday for Bible study in the afternoon for adult and children. And then sometime we would have special occasion, like a special holiday, like Christmas, Thanksgiving, Easter. So those are the day that could be celebrated during special holidays.
Okay, Mr. Planner, you have any question?
So what I'd like to add, I'm just gonna bring the staff report up on the screen to show some of the pictures as well. Again, this is the property we're talking about, seven five, nine five North Mountain Road in the industrial zone. As you can see the property, and I'll show you in the pictures, there is some parking that's associated in the front of the property, but the bulk of the parking is located behind this property. Again, it's a previous industrial, and I believe actually before that, it was a non-industrial use.
It was industrial then, yeah, and then there's, yes.
Yeah, there was actually a slightly different, not quite the level of place of assembly as a church, but it was more non-industrial use prior to this, at this site. So what we have here again has a, it's a special permit use requirement for a place of worship in any zone in the town of Newington. So that's why they're in front of you here today. So again, the, the building is approximately eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-two square feet. We have reviewed the amount of parking spaces. The applicant is proposing thirty-one. Twenty-nine is required, so they meet the parking requirement. The one item that was reviewed by me and the town engineer when we reviewed the site, and the picture you can kind of see up on the screen is the way it was developed, there's a one-way in and out for the existing site for the rear, which where the bulk of the parking is located. So again, this is an existing condition on the site. We looked at ways that could possibly be changed. It would require significant changes, probably even demolition of a building to change this traffic pattern on the site. There's electrical, there's a lot of stuff in the way, and even to make it zoning compliant for a full round, there isn't the space really to do so. So again, this is an existing condition that we're dealing with. So other than that, the staff has a couple of recommendations, again, with the town engineer. One of them mainly is that something be added to that area of the driveway that indicates to drivers, you know, some signage, stop signage, and potentially traffic mirrors on that. That just provides an additional layer of safety for accessibility on the site. We have spoken with the applicant. The applicant is amenable to that, working on the site, and also we did recommend that they establish a parking management plan for services, you know, to let the parishioners know, obviously they will know. But something that, at least for once people to get used to it, that you have someone out on site who's kind of making sure that the traffic flow is working, and that there aren't any conflicts at that point. So other than that, staff does find that it meets the special permits requirements with these additions, again, just for some parking safety and for that circulation on the site.
Okay, thank you. Any commissioner comments? Commissioner Hoffman?
Yeah, Commissioner Hoffman, here, there's some abandoned cars on the site right now.
Yes, there is. It's gonna be removed. In the process, we're trying to remove it. And so like, at the same time, we're working the rear parking lot, stripping down, reseal, and trying to get the lines painted, and we're gonna move those vehicles in the picture. So that will be removed during probably this week.
Are those vehicles currently registered?
No, it was left there by previous owner. They said you could have it. They gave us the key, and then, you know, it's just, it's a dead vehicle, so we gotta, we gotta get it out of there.
Okay, so he did not take charge in getting rid of them?
No, he donated to us. He said, you guys could use to plow the rear during snowstorm or whatever. Because it's a plow truck, so it's not registered.
Okay, so that, that'll be one of the things that has to be done before he can repave and reline?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Michelle Watts? Commissioner Fox?
No comment. Thank you.
I have one question. Are the parishioners going to be walking down this driveway?
Probably, I would say yes.
You might want to put a white stripe on one side, keep them against the building.
Okay.
I'm not even, I don't know how, you know how wide that driveway is, Mr. Planner?
I believe it's fourteen feet. Yeah, there's, there's actually, per the site plan, there's fifteen feet between this building and the property line. So it is pretty tight.
You can put a two-foot shoulder to the left. I mean, if I'm looking at it to the left, so people are over there, and it keeps the traffic away from them.
Yep, and I, and I would.
It's my only concern. I don't want somebody to get hurt there. And, uh, I'm not a real big fan of speed bumps, but that's something maybe you and the town engineer can look at. Because you don't want somebody flying through there. It's only a suggestion.
Yeah, and I think that that's why, again, me and town engineer looked at it, and again, with the signage, with pavement markings and everything, just, it's gonna be pretty obvious when someone comes in that it's narrow, but it is an additional layer of visual cues to people to go, oh, wait, this is tight, I need to stop, and actually have a stop condition before, look at the traffic mirror, and make sure that there's no traffic coming.
Okay.
Again, from staff looking, this is my discussion with town engineer as well. If this was a normal commercial establishment that had traffic going in and out, in and out at different times, that, you know, could be a higher concern as well. The, I would say, potential advantage of a place of worship is just because the way traffic works with those arriving and leaving a service, typically you have a large arrival and a large, you know, people leaving the site. So it is kind of a better flow for this condition than with someone coming in, you know, a car every five minutes or so or less. You have a large flow in and a large flow out.
I'm just, just making a suggestion, that's all.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We're gonna open it up to anybody, have people speak either for it or against it, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, you can come back and rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish you to speak in favor of this?
Yelvedrico, twenty-one Isabel Terrace. Actually, on Saturdays and Sundays, I ride my bike down North Mountain Road and whatever, and there's very little traffic on the weekend. And there's also two, if not three, other places of worship on the road. And even with that, there's not much traffic at all, because, you know, the service, there's schedule for the services and whatever. That area of town does need to be built up, and I do think that the fact that there's other houses of worship there, that this would not be out of, out of character. And I personally, I think it would not be a problem, and I support it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish you to speak in favor? Anybody online, Eric?
No one online has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone wish you to speak against this? Anyone wish you to speak against this? Okay. Okay, I hear a motion to close and post for all business.
So move.
Second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, thank you. Will we be acting on this tonight? Okay, thank you. Hey, the, uh, next is approval of the minutes. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes?
They'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, closed, thank you. Next is, uh, we have new business, we have the same thing again, Paul, or should that?
So a new business, since it is this, so what I'll do is I have the email again that I've passed out to the.
No, no, I'm not, yeah, okay, you're gonna read that back in again?
Yep, yeah, so that's the application. Make sure I got mine. Mine, yeah, twenty-four dash twelve. Application twenty-four twelve for the special permit for a place of assembly for recreation for an indoor trampoline park at one seventy-five Lowry Place. So I will read in that, again, it's from the applicant Ayesha Afzal, that she sent to us on Tuesday, August thirteenth, at three forty-five P M. Hi, Eric and Paul, as per our conversation earlier today, I just wanted to confirm via email also that we are pulling out of negotiations for one seventy-five Lowry Place. We will not be going ahead with a special permit use app any longer. Thank you so much for your support and assistance throughout the process. Best, Ayesha. So I've prepared a motion for you to accept the withdrawal.
Yeah, I think it's you.
Motion to accept the withdrawal of petition TPZ twenty-four twelve, special permit section three dash point thirteen point zero and section three point eleven point one for a place of assembly for recreation for an indoor trampoline park with an accessory cafe, one seventy-five Lowry Place, AKA one oh three dash one seventy-five Lowry Place in the BTC Business Town Center Zone and the Town Center Village Overlay District. Applicant contact Ayesha Afzal, owner Lowry Place Realty.
Moving second, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, thank you. And next is twenty-four thirteen, Mr. Planner. We all start on that, or?
Yep, I think, you know, staff has put forward those conditions. The applicant does not have any issue with the conditions as presented, so staff recommends approval.
Okay.
Conditional approval, as noted in the draft motion.
Okay. Motion to approve with, do I need to read the first part too again?
Yeah.
Okay, petition TPZ twenty-four dash thirteen, special permit, three point two point one for a place of worship at seven ninety-five North Mountain Road in the I Industrial Zone. Applicant contact Sean Garun Shantavang, owner City Church Corporation. Move to approve with conditions. Move to approve the special permit for a place of worship at seven ninety-five North, North Mountain Road with the following conditions. One, parking lot should be crack sealed and restriped. Two, signage and traffic mirror to be installed on both sides of the building where the drive from the front parking lot to the rear is of limited width. Three, it is recommended that the church establish a parking management plan for services. This plan may include onsite traffic direction at the beginning and end of services. Four, the applicant owner will remove the abandoned, inoperable, and/or unregistered vehicles currently in the rear of the building. Reasons for approval: the application meets the requirements of the zoning regulations and the special permit requirements.
Uh, Mr. Planner? Uh, the word says motion to approve with conditions. You have seven ninety-five North Mountain Road and an avenue after it.
I think that was just probably a.
That was my mistake.
Yeah, okay, no, I just.
Luckily, that's just on the internal document and not on anything posted.
Just notice, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Aiden, second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, thank you, passage of unanimous. Okay. Next thing is item C. Mr. Planner?
I will bring. So let me get it sharing. All right, so as the commission, remember, in the past, it has the site, so this is for ninety-six, ninety-eight, one hundred Payne Road. This was part of the three, 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 three Berlin Turnpike approval that included the commercial and residential component. During that approval process, of course, these two properties were split apart. This is its own individual parcel. As you'll know, that we did include the original approval petition twenty-three, twenty-one, because that's what this was approved under. Again, this was, they got an approval previously to open first building on March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, and that was modified on April tenth, twenty twenty-four. The site has been operating well. We have not received any complaints on the first part of the opening. No complaints from tenants, no issues on site, and they are looking to open the second building. So the applicant has prepared a couple of slides for you as well. They're here to present, you know, how far they're going along with the property. There has been significant progress even made from when staff wrote the report on Thursday till today. And based upon their timeline, we expect them to actually be complete with the work on site for the phasing plan they submitted prior to next meeting. So what they would be looking for you tonight is to potentially issue a conditional partial acceptance of the site. Conditioned upon the town planner, me, town engineer, and fire marshal all inspecting the site and signing off on the final condition for safety and for completion with their phasing plan. From here, if you like, I would like to hand it over to.
Scott Nielsen, the project manager.
Yeah, you're speaking to the microphone, please.
Yep. All right. I'll just have to.
So you can turn to your right, Scott, too. It's over there, if you're right or your left, either way.
Thank you very much. Okay. Scott Nielsen, the project manager for Mill Yard Apartments. The owner is the residences in Newington LLP. We are criterion development partners. With me tonight is Eric Von Arm, who is our project executive, who some of you have met before. But I also brought Carlos Arias. He's our community manager, and he's an official resident of Newington. So he lives on site. We now have a hundred and thirty-five residences, residents living at these properties. We have like forty-five star reviews and no complaints, as, as was noted. So we're very proud of the track record we've already established. Almost everybody is new to Newington, so growth and progress, we hope we are contributing to that as well. So building two, um, in the, this is the site plan. Now, at that distance, that's gonna be pretty hard to see. I have a laser pointer. So if you drove in from Berlin Turnpike, on the right would be building one, and the pool would be behind it. You know, Paul, can we just go to the next photo?
Yep, we'll do that, because he is jumping around.
When you have that in hand, it's easy to follow, but when you look at it that distance, it's a real. So we're looking at building two, and on the left-hand side is a portion of building one and the pool. So the parking lot is ready to go. Everything about the building is, uh, has passed every single inspection, all the life safety inspections, fire department, elevator safety. The building official, Doug Jordan, who does also the mechanical and electrical, everything has been completed, and all those, uh, items have been signed off on. We are left with a few site issues, which is the reason here. We've worked closely with Paul Dixon and with Chris, both Chris's from the town engineering department, Ben out there. While we've got the, this site top coated, Paul, if you'll go to the next slide, we also have part of the back parking lot ready to go. So we have sixty-nine spaces. I'd like to say we could fill that quickly, but it'll take a few months to do that. And so we have some additional work to do behind the garage that you see up there, and at the very top, we still have soil to distribute. And if we can go for one more slide, this, the major issue, and this has progressed even since this picture was taken earlier in the day, is the dirt area, soil area that you see there, we need to put gravel and binder down so that we have emergency access all the way around. We have been set back a little bit by rain. And it, so, you know, it's, our people have always been ready to go, and so we expect by this time next week, we'll have that binder down. There's a couple other minor issues that engineering suggested. We're modifying some drainage. We've already reestablished all the conservation and erosion controls. All of that work has been completed. The last part is when this work is done, we will be cleaning that center drive very thoroughly. We've already taken a fire hose to it, but the soils you all have here, man, they, they are, the fine, it's like paint. You know, we go, we sweep it, you sweep it every day, the dust rises and it falls, right? We sweep it with water, it's still like paint, but we will, by this time next week, have that in very different condition, because we will have completed that. So those are really the issues, the access for the emergency access all the way around. Again, the building is good to go. On that end, right there, we're modifying some drainage, yes, per engineering, around patios, and most of that work is also done. And the street cleaning and the site cleaning, we've done most of that already. So what we are here to request is, as written in the minutes, we would ask for conditional approval, meaning that when this work is done, and as Paul said, Paul and Chris and the fire marshal say, you know, these are acceptable, that they would be able to issue the partial certificate of occupancy, so we can move six new Newington residents in next weekend. So that gives us, you know, eight to ten days. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and any amount of detail you want, but, um, again, we're very proud of the work, and people are very happy here, and, you know, we invite you all to come by and see what we're doing.
Any questions on commissioners? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to the chairman, Paul. It was mentioned that Chief Clama was talking about buying, you know, putting the binder coat down.
Yes.
Do you think it's necessary? I'm just asking, just in case it comes up, if that's put in, for that to be put in on the conditions in addition to, you know, by a department approval.
Yep, I think, well, they do have it planned, again, binder coat by eight twenty-one, per this document that's, that they said, but likely, I talked to Scott, and they're actually planning to hopefully get it done Friday.
Well, maybe. Today, again, with courtesy of the rain, you've noticed we found some, you know, soils there that are a little soggy, so we are taking, I think we will be paving early next week, but we will not pave on soggy soil. It will come back to haunt us, and so we will not do that. So we are amending this, what we're, as I said, it's changed even today. So we're laying more filter fabric, more, and the filter fabric helps immensely gravel. And so that may push, and likely will push, our paving till Tuesday.
Okay, so to answer that question, too, I think the way I think we wrote these conditions, too, again, with approval of the fire marshal, which would be reaching out to the chief, because actually I had the chief in my office, and we were discussing this project, and that was his one where he wanted that to be bindered, just to leave the equipment there, just to make sure, because, you know, the previous approval had the temporary access road between the two. Again, it wasn't gonna be paved, that was a different type of condition. It was stone, it was solid. Luckily, it was not needed, which is fantastic. The chances of that being done at the same time as everything else is likely, if there was an issue that came up, that's something that I would happily discuss with the chief. If it was a matter of a couple of days, and he said, okay, if it's just good solace process down there, he's. If it was a matter of a couple of days and he said, okay, if it's just good solace process down there, he's okay with it. I think there's some flexibility in that with the approval of the fire marshal that he could work with the applicant.
Thank you. We, and we do appreciate that and I appreciate the question. And again, it's more soil conditions. There are people that may pave over that stuff. I won't do it. And, and so that's where if we needed that cooperation, we would ask for it, but Paul has seen that, you know, when suggestions are made, we follow up immediately. And so high-quality work is critical important stuffs.
The I won't do is the que- is the answer I was looking for.
Yeah, I won't pay over that, that stuff.
We've had problems like that.
Okay, so that's, yeah. And, and that's the only, that is the only possible issues. Got a young guy out there still working on that site right now. And so we're appreciative.
Yep. And nor would planning or engineering suggest paving over any poor subsurface material.
Any other questions for commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, on the east side of the building, will the landscaping be done?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, we're, we're close, we're close to that now. All the bushes are in. There's two little patios that I painted pink stripes around and we're digging those out so and putting in area drains where I said there's a little bit of drainage to do. So we are doing, putting in additional airage drains, um, and, and sculpting the ground better so it drains there. But that work will definitely be done.
And same, same with the south and west side. I'm assuming the north side.
The sod is around at least two-thirds of the building. Already.
Not, not.
Well, sod and plant.
South, south side of the building, that planted.
Yes. Um, here we go. You can see on the, uh, the right is the south side.
Yep, I see.
And you get a hint of that if we go to the next, uh, slide again, Paul, where we see that. I don't know that we're gonna see it, but you can see the sod on the left there. So the sod goes there and on the kind of in the middle, but to the right, the sod is, um, there. Those are one of the patios we changed. So we are well around that.
Okay.
And our landscaper has done an excellent job, you know, on, on this. Again, love to have you, you know, just drive through if you got a chance, see what, see what we look like.
And there's only the one access to the building, um, from the east side, correct? Just that one main sidewalk.
Yes. The, well, the main entrance is actually, gotta go to a different shot, is in the, we call the knuckle inside on these, um, right in there. That is the main access. Um, the other is an emergency access on the east side. It's, it's actually an emergency egress.
So tenants won't come in and out that way?
Uh, they will be able to come in and out. That's one. We have another emergency access just like that on the south side. So there's two staircases, you know, required by code, where they can come in and out. Um, in that first month, uh, we'd love to be able to move in a dozen to fifteen people for the first month.
First month, uh, nineteen.
Nineteen, okay. But we've got, you know, again, you've got all your legal egress. And as a matter of fact, we have that east side, um, exit fenced off from the commercial. Because they will be able to utilize that egress and, and that work, um, will be finished for that, uh, for next week.
The place is coming out beautiful.
Thank you.
It looks really good.
Good, thanks.
The entire complex looks good.
Yeah.
They paid a lot of attention to detail and it shows.
Yes. We, uh, we are obsessive about those details. And so, you know, and, and because it really counts for the long run. And that's why I'm so, you know, after we're all done, Carlos and his group are gonna be maintaining this facility. And we share those same standards. So, um, again, we're proud to be able to contribute to Newington in this sort of way.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, any other questions? Yes, Mr. Fox.
I might have missed something when Commissioner Woods was talking and you were talking about the turf, the sod, uh, so that get that one main entrance. So most, most people, if not all, I hope, would really not have any access to any unsodded places with, with, you know, where you have.
Correct. That is fenced off. Okay. And that, so there is a clear delineation between the construction and residential zones. And so we do, um, that was the, the issue that we clarified the first time and we have, uh, you know, maintained that and that will continue to be the case. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add is like it says, I'm, I just wanna make sure that gravel is paved because if our equipment or apparatus, as they call it, goes in there, they put the outriggers and a guy's going up and all for emergency and the outrigger shifts, I don't want anybody getting hurt. That's why I wanna get solid, uh, you know, base in there.
We, and, and we agree, life safety is always our number one issue for everybody. I mean, that.
Well, that was the fire department's concern, you know, because when those outriggers go in with the aerials going up and stuff.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, with a binder course will be great.
Yeah.
And I'm glad that you're not gonna pave over wet, um, soil as we had in another project, right, Mike?
You betcha, yeah.
Uh, they had paved over it and the binder core started breaking up after a number of years and it was a mess.
But, yeah. We, as I said.
Other than that, I do.
I will, I will do it. We won't do it. And, and we will have documentation. We will, you know, notify engineering and planning, you know, with our, with our schedule and anybody wants to come out and observe as we go through it, they'll be welcome. We have third-party inspectors though also. And so our third-party, our geotechnical engineers have been, um, intimately involved in this issue. But we saw it without the geotech needing to tell us about it. Um, and so that's why we're taking, you know, added measures. And a couple more days of drying out, I think, will, will help. And then once we get that geotech, that down and the additional gravel will be in much better shape.
There is no drying out.
Well, I, you know, I, I understand.
You should have built an art.
Yeah, right. No, but we did use this, we did end up using the same process in building one, okay? And it's been a little bit longer than a lot longer, but everything is, is solid.
Yeah.
You know, and we, you know, we can tell. I mean, and even the contractor shares the same, you know, values that we have that that Mizzy's a big contractor in the area and they don't wanna, you know, do something that is, you know.
You don't want something that's gonna fail.
Yeah. So.
Um, I, like I said, I've drove, driven by, I haven't driven any yet. It looks very impressive. I'm very pleased with the way you're.
Yeah.
Operating, you're saying, doing the, the, uh, project. And, uh, good luck to you.
And again, you said, drop by if you, and our staff will be happy to show you around. Carlos is, you know, recruited some new staff members.
Paul and I might stop out Monday, maybe.
We could do that.
Back next month and bring you the next building online.
Well, okay, so October one, where you're early October, you know, we're shooting for that, but we're already talking about conditions and, you know, the teamwork with the town of Newington has been excellent. Let me say that, right? Nobody has relaxed a single standard, yet the m- means of communication and the approach to it has been extremely cooperative. And I like to think we have too, you know, that we wanna do that good job. And so we've been appreciative every step of the way of the response that we've received from the town of Newington.
The town of Newington employees like Paul and Eric and Chris are all great people to work with. And, and let me tell you something, we can't find a better group of people.
And, yeah, well, I said this to Doug, J- Jordan the other day and I said, he said, what? You know, I'm just doing my job. I said, you don't always get this. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, anybody else wish you to speak? Any wish you to speak against this?
Yep.
Yeah, everybody's. Okay, we're all set. We need a motion, Paul. We're all set on.
Uh, you need a motion and there is a motion prepared.
Right there.
Yep, flip it over.
The motion page.
Back of the motion page. Modification to the partial site plan acceptance approved, um, March twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four and April tenth, twenty-twenty-four for building two at ninety-six to one hundred Payne Road for the approved petition twenty-three, twenty-one at three-three-three-three Berlin Turnpike. Motion to approve with conditions. Motion to approve the partial site plan acceptance at ninety-six to one hundred Payne Road, building two, subject to the following conditions. One, the partial approval is limited to ninety-six to one hundred Payne Road building. Two, as shown on the building two site turnover plan. Two, the approval is subject to inspection and approval of site conditions by the town planner, town engineer and fire marshal prior to the issuance of ACO. Three, all areas that are open to tenants shall be kept clean and free of sediment and construction debris.
Have a second?
Second.
Alright, move to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Thank you.
Good luck, John. Good luck.
Very much.
Okay, uh, no business, uh, Paul.
Okay, so yep, there are, uh, two petitions for a public hearing scheduling, which actually they should show up in the newspaper tomorrow. Um, that's petition, uh, for a restaurant at thirty-three eighty-four Berlin Turnpike, AKA thirty-three eighty-four, thirty-three eighty-eight. Um, so this is the former site of, uh, Dunkin' Donuts. It was changed to a commercial site and it didn't have a special permit for a restaurant at the site. So they're coming in for a special permit at the site. So they'll be here next time to present. And the other one is for a freestanding sign at sixty-seven Payne Road. Um, so that's pretty self-explanatory. So those will be in for special permit, um, for a public hearing at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Planner.
Can I ask a question? Is this another one that when the business went out, closed down, the special permit just goes away?
Never a special permit granted. But we'll get into that with the.
Yeah, we can have that discussed another time.
Yep. Uh, anyways, so, uh, so the next item, if, Mr. Chairman, I'll just move on to the town planner report.
Yes.
Uh, so again, current land use is out there. I do not, uh, item B is update. I do not have any specific site ones on that, but I do wanna let you know. So as it's been, uh, discussed during, um, the Economic Development Commission and at town council last night, that yes, we have signed a contract for the Town Center Economic Development Master Plan. I will be meeting next week, um, with Colliers. And, um, again, the first part of any of these processes, of course, is to work out the game plan, um, going forward. Commissions, the public outreach and working out that framework. Because again, as you get the proposal and you get the contract and then you move forward, the first step is always to work that out. Again, I see this as being a very heavy public engagement part of this process. Um, utilizing a lot of our current land use, land use boards and boards, um, and commissions within the town. Of course, the TPZ, uh, especially for the zoning component of this and a lot of the economic components, I'll be having, um, Colliers. And they have, um, I, their subcon- subconsultant, economic development sub, uh, consultant is Camoin. So it is Colliers and Camoin who are gonna be doing this project with us. Um, again, I'll have a meeting next week and afterwards we'll have a kickoff meeting and then we'll start moving forward with our public outreach and I'll be providing updates to the commission as well. So I'm excited to move with this project. Um, again, we had some shifting with it. I spoke with the town manager today regarding it. And we will be moving forward. So I just wanna give you that update. Uh, if you have any questions, please let me know. And other than that, again, we're.
Any questions?
Yes, more comment. Uh, I'm glad that we're moving forward this because Hartford Healthcare has since pulled the property off the market, right? But it'd be nice, I think, um, that they have an idea of what we plan to see there. So that when they do market it again, if they market it again, they're, they're not going blind. Because right now it's pretty restricted.
Yeah, and I, I have been in contact, um, with them and, um, with multiple people from, uh, Hartford Hospital, Hartford Healthcare. And, um, Tom Vacarelli, who is their real estate, um, I've been talking with him as well. And, uh, no, they will definitely, you know, while they're not the ones doing the thing, they, all stakeholders will be involved and they are a major stakeholder. They own a large piece of property as well. So again, I'll be working with them and also asking them for every plan that they've done in the past, every study that they have, because all the information that I can pull into this will just mean that we can get further along with our project. So all stakeholders will be involved.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, CROG numbers are in the packet.
Yep. So, uh, on communication, there's a CROG P O C D. So I wrote this memo, um, put it out there and it is in the packet. What I'll do is I'll actually bring it up. So it ends up on the presentation. So I did share this, um, with the town manager and he did note it during last night's, uh, council meeting as well. But, um, so this is the Ca- Capital Region Council Government's twenty-twenty-four Plan of Conservation and Development. Um, this is just kind of a notice for the commission and for the public as well. So they have put, uh, they have their draft, um, or proposed, uh, Plan of Conservation and Development for the region. Um, there will be a public hearing on September nineteenth uh, for that. Right now, if you go to their website, it had, doesn't give you the exact link for it yet. That will be coming soon. But the key dates are if you want to provide written comment, uh, from the P O C D is by September tenth. Uh, September seventeenth is the final deadline. Uh, comments received, again, the comments on September tenth will be incorporated. The comments on September seventeenth will be included in amended meeting packet. And then if, on September nineteenth, you have the chance to, uh, provide comment at the meeting itself. Again, I have the project website up. I can also put this up on the planning page, uh, for the town as well. As a news flash, just for those who are interested out there. Again, it is a very large document, um, to go through these. When you get to the regional P O C Ds, there are hundreds of pages. However, if there is something that people see out there or something that they're interested in, again, for the region, because it does impact us, we have our own P O C D, but this is for the entire region. So this is just a point of information for everyone out there as well. But if you would like to provide public comment on it, there's the website. You, there's a link to provide written comment in as well, and there are email addresses.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any more public participations? The second fight around? Eric, anybody online?
No one has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Looks like you have some people in the room.
Okay.
Twenty-one Isabel Harris, um, just when you were talking, I meant to actually send you guys the article, um.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
And when you were talking about, um, the, uh, consultant being, you know, uh, contracted for the town center, there was a very, there was an article about a week or two ago regarding Farmington where, um, one of, uh, some residents donated um, a significant amount of open space to Farmington right off the, uh, right on Route four by where the, um, Route comes off of eighty-four and Route four and near the, um, Yukon Health Center. And the context of the articles was they were also talking to the town planner and the, um, the council, is that how important it is to the gateways of town to be attractive? And that was, you know, one of the reasons why they were very pleased to have this open space and this nice vista when you're going into, um, Farmington. So I'm hoping that in addition to the spur for economic development, I guess there's no really nice way to say this, but the only, I think, attractive gateway into Newington at this point is coming down Cedar Mountain. And the entry is, the other gateways, um, in, in my opinion, are not necessarily attractive coming into town. So I hope that keeping that attractive and somewhat green and in somewhat in context with the surrounding neighborhoods and what we wanna present to people in terms of what Newington is will be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil McCarthy, two oh six Churchill Drive. Um, curiosity question to start off with. Public participation for items not listed on the agenda. Um, you guys covered everything. Uh, the only thing, you know, that I, I sent out an email the other day about the, uh, P O C D that, that came off of Jonathan's tongue really easily last night. And I said, what the hell is he talking about, P O C D? Because, and I, I, I had been to the development, um, meeting, conservation and development meeting just last week and it didn't register in my head. Um, I'm glad that you acknowledged that there's been a lot of other P O C Ds out there. This council here or this committee had one in twenty-twenty, uh, which was called the twenty-thirties P O C D. And the state of, well, C R, C R, whatever they are, C R, CROG, had a twenty-eighteen, which is three hundred and fourteen pages long. And is very, it's social engineering is what it comes down to. I, I, I found it very tedious to read. Um, I, I look forward to the hearings. I don't know if they're gonna be part of this committee or if they're gonna be totally separate or anything like that, but that, that's good. Um, Hartford Hospital property, something needs to get done with that. We have, I have that on plan. The, uh, I, I mentioned that last night's meeting, there was a, they were talking about the, uh, bonding issue for the, uh, pool and there's a line in there. The uh pool and there's a line in there that says it's contingent upon TPZ review. And I just want, I brought that to their to their attention last night because I didn't know. If that was going to be one of those things where, oh, well, the TPZ needs to get involved in our timeline for getting it on referendum. The the other thing was uh the Char- Charles Brown from the Central Connecticut Health District. Was talking about uh the blight, well, he he was suggesting that people call up and complain about blight issues for the rat infestation. So he he said to call the town manager and in in in, that does come right over to you, Eric. But they they, he's, he talked in depth about uh the different issues of of keeping. People a little bit more safe from the, say, from the rat infestation. Um I think you guys are doing a great job and I look forward to helping you work with you, thanks.
Explain the two P O C Ds.
Yeah, so the.
Bill.
Oh no, it's okay, it's the the main difference, of course, is I think this was brought up um last night as well is, yeah, the P O C D again, for the region, it's a larger regional document. They end up large, our own P O C D is large too, but that's the key thing, is the P O C D is a large guiding document. It provides recommendations moving forward, it provides the vision of the town, it provides what the residents. Um and those surveyed during that process, as we know, it's been noted too, at the top, one of that one is open space in the P O C D that the residents who were surveyed. Uh responded to in that one, amongst other items that were important for the town. Um the main difference again against the P O C D and these concentrated area studies is the P O C D. Doesn't do economic analysis down to a parcel level, down to a street level, looking at all the uses. It does include things for our town center, like looking at uh what we do with our current uses, moving some things from special permit to as of right, what we want to encourage. And again, this will drill down deeper into that, not only what we want to encourage, but what is feasible? What does the market bear and how should we be positioning ourselves? And not only what does the market bear, is what is the vision that people have, what is the vision that residents have for the town center? Compared to what the market bears, to have an understanding of, does our vision match up with reality? And in what ways can we make our vision a realistic thing to build and our realistic thing? So that that's going to be really what the, what this level of study is beyond the P O C D, what it can accomplish. And that's why we're doing that specific area study.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Fine. Okay, any other uh public participation? Okay, uh remarks by commissioners, any remarks by commissioners? Okay, those remarks by the chairman, I want to thank everybody for showing up and attending, um you know, it's the summer, summertime, people want to get away. With that, I want to turn a motion to adjourn.
They'll move.
Move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a good night, everybody.